I wanted to sort of set the table for a discussion of race in public schools by going back to the summer of 2020 when race became really supercharged in our public schools. The issue of race had always been sort of present, especially since the preceding two decades. But things started to really happen. In 2021, we started to get complaints from teachers, school board members, students about things happening in public schools related to race. These were related to curriculum, school discipline, programs and classes and trainings. I just want to give you a little flavor for some of these overt acts of race discrimination that we heard about right after the summer of 2020. The Madison Metropolitan School District had a policy for K-5. It was a reading curriculum, and it mandated, quote, "Meet with your Black students first and more often." The Appleton area school district held a freshman orientation program that was only open to students of color. We received multiple complaints from school districts about segregated students in class, segregated students on field trips, even on buses. We had a segregated bus case. Even parents were segregated during student meetings based on their race. We heard an allegation that children as young as five were forced to admit their white privilege in front of class and explain how their white lives were much easier than Black lives. One pre-K teacher told me that she was forced to use hand puppets representing two Puerto Rican characters. The teacher was told, quote, "When you need to say something important, use the hand puppets. The children don't need to hear instruction from another white woman." These are not unusual stories. I'm sure Kim has many stories and has heard many more than those. The source of this racialization in America was first labeled as critical race theory or CRT. More recently, you've heard about diversity, equity, and inclusion, or DEI, whatever you want to call this. This theory, this worldview rests on two pillars. First is the idea of race essentialism, that your race is the most important thing about you, and that your race puts you in buckets of whether you're an oppressed or the oppressor. And the theory of systemic racism, that American society, everything about it, your school board, your school, your local police department, all these institutions are stacked in such a way that people of color can never succeed. That's the theory of systemic racism. Because of this prevailing theory, students and their teachers must be treated differently, must be treated equitably. Equity is the calling card for the modern public school district. There is a school district in Sun Prairie, Wisconsin, that says, "We have an equity mindset in that everything we do, every single action we take is through the lens of equity." And equity means differing treatment based on your race. That's what it means. So we're going to see today that this worldview of equity, DEI, CRT, or whatever you call it, does run headlong into the law. And that's what we spend our days doing, is dealing with that issue. So for the first question here, and I want to address it to Rick. I've heard public school administrators, I've heard superintendents, I've heard even lawyers for school districts say that non-discrimination laws only apply to, quote, "protected classes." This suggestion is that racial minorities are the only ones who receive protection by the law. I've also heard a school administrator say that racial diversity is critical and even required, so schools can use racial balancing and other tools to achieve equitable results. Rick, are these people right? And if not, what should school board members know about non-discrimination laws, sort of from a 30,000-foot view? Does the law protect everyone? And what should school board members know about the law of non-discrimination?
He's muted. I think you're muted, Rick.
They're not right, and the law does protect everyone. We've had a long history of this. You did a great job, Dan, of explaining these concepts of equity, which is being advanced now in distinction to equality, and anti-racism, which is being advanced in preference to non-discrimination. And the ideology here is that our racial past is such that discrimination or improper treatment can be presumed from racial imbalance, and that fixing that imbalance is the job of institutions like school boards, public schools, and that that will necessarily require some form of racial discrimination, right? Abram Kendi says that the only answer to racist discrimination is non-racist discrimination. And people have attempted to embed, you know, those ideas in non-discrimination law. You know, because you have a variety of laws that, you know, could apply to school districts. There's the federal and state constitution. There's, you know, Title IX often is a condition of receiving federal funds. You're obligated to follow certain non-discrimination requirements. There are, you know, state anti-discrimination laws. And there's been a long attempt to offer various rationales for these things, and all of them have been, I think, unsuccessful in the long run. You know, there's courts have occasionally, you know, nodded in the direction of these concepts, but I think that the bottom line now in our law, and it's still a battle. I mean, you know, we're filing lawsuits, but it seems weakly. But I think the law is quite clear now that the non-discrimination principles apply to everyone, and non-discrimination means non-discrimination. And if you think about it, that makes perfect sense. You know, we didn't fight a civil war. We didn't have a civil rights movement in order to make sure that each racial group, you know, got its proportion of whatever was being handed out. We fought it because we knew it was wrong to treat people differently on the basis of race. And I think, but it's not quite over, but I think that that's really what the law requires. And, you know, it's more complex than that. I mean, there's some pitfalls that you have to watch out for. But the answer to your question, Dan, is that these folks are absolutely wrong, but there are a lot of them, and you will encounter them in this world.
So, Kim, how do you address a school board member who would come to you and say things like, "Well, I'm told diversity is our strength. I'm told we need equity. We need to do these policies." What do you tell them that they should know about the law?
Yeah, okay. Is this working? One of the first things that I like to tell them is to just educate you guys on what are these kind of key terms that you're going to start to hear. One thing that you'll very frequently hear is, well, Title VI requires this. Well, what is Title VI, right? You're not lawyers, you're not expected to know that, and it can sound kind of scary. Title VI falls under our Civil Rights Laws and, so, Civil Rights Act of 1964. And Title VI requires that you cannot, schools cannot discriminate on the basis of race. That means that you cannot treat anyone, any student, any teacher, any administrator, I would argue even parents, that are in the school district different because of their skin color. It does not say these particular people are protected and these people are not protected. And that's kind of the first thing that I always suggest to respond back to, is to say, "The law says we cannot treat people differently because of their skin color," and stop. It does not say that we can institute racial preferences. The Constitution also protects the same thing. So the equal protection clause and Title VI are interpreted very similarly by the courts. We're going to talk a little later about some cases that we have going on by both of our groups that involve these two laws. And then, you know, the second piece of advice that I like to give is that the response you typically get is, "Well, our country is based on systemic racism, and so we have to fix that." Okay? Leaving policy arguments aside, because I don't agree with that, and I suspect that a lot of people out there and in this room don't either, that alone, even if you could prove that there had been systemic racism in this country, that is not enough to justify treating people differently today based on the color of their skin. And the courts have very clearly said that. Will won a fantastic case several years ago in a different area, dealing with small businesses, where the court said that clearly, and we have all been working in our line of work to get that case law spread out into schools and other federal agencies and state agencies. And the courts, when they see it, say, "Of course it doesn't justify that." And so those are the two really big things that you're going to be faced with first, is people are going to say, "The law requires it." And when you say, "No, it doesn't," they're going to say, "Oh, but we have to fix systemic racism." And that's when you say, "The law actually prohibits us from doing that."
That's really helpful. There's certainly a lot of work to do, and this is a big uphill battle. And as Rick says, there's more of them than there are of you. One of the big topics we hear a lot about is compelled speech. We've received a lot of reports at Will from both students and teachers in school districts who have said that they're being forced to believe in this theory of systemic racism or to espouse beliefs about racism in America. We refer to this, lawyers do, as compelled speech. I want to give you just a couple of examples to set the table. In January of this year, a student from Shorewood High School here in Wisconsin wrote an essay that's online. She explained how she was bullied by teachers and administrators for holding the belief that white people could be discriminated against, and how she was ridiculed for not believing that law enforcement agencies were racist, and how she was told she could not have an opinion on racism in America because she, as an immigrant, just got here. On the adult side of the ledger, there's a federal case currently pending in Wisconsin called Becky Spengler versus Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. In this case, Ms. Spengler, who's a state employee, recounts how she was called a racist and ridiculed because she objected to concepts such as systemic racism, white fragility, implicit bias, microaggressions. The lawsuit alleges, quote, "DPI stated that plaintiff could not be trusted and did not have a, quote, 'equity mindset.'" Kim, can a teacher be fired for not having a, quote, "equity mindset"? Can a student be disciplined for believing that both Blacks and Whites can be the victims of racism? What is compelled speech, and how do you deal with these sorts of issues?
So a lot to unpack there. I'll try to do it quickly. The First Amendment protects both your right to speak and your right to not speak. And so in some of those situations that we're talking about, that's where those two rights kind of intersect. And schools cannot discriminate based on viewpoint. The government can never discriminate against speech based on viewpoint. And so, in other words, if they're letting one student say, you know, "I believe X," and the other student says, "I believe Y," and they punish the student that says, "I believe Y," that's viewpoint discrimination. You just can't do it. So, for example, your school board members, you have parents that want to speak at a school board meeting. You allow one of them to come up and speak pro for a discipline program or disciplinary policy, but you don't allow parents to come up and speak against it. That's unconstitutional. You violated their First Amendment rights. When it comes to compelled speech, it's a little bit trickier because the law is somewhat unclear here, and I think it's important that you guys know that, right? The law is not always black and white, and there are lots of lawsuits going on with compelled speech right now. And it's because with compelled speech, students are going to have different rights than teachers, and where they are and what they're talking about is going to dictate that. And so in other words, if you're talking about something in a classroom, can a teacher require a student to write a paper on a particular topic? They can, right? That's not necessarily considered compelled speech. Can they fail them and punish them because they don't like what they wrote about? Like, maybe they wrote a pro-Trump paper, or they wrote, it could go the complete opposite way, right? You could have a conservative teacher, and they don't like something that somebody wrote pro-Biden. They can't punish them because of that. And so that's where you get more into the free speech area versus compelled speech. Compelled speech really comes in when you're talking about telling people what to believe and what to believe in their personal lives. And we have some cases pending on that, and so I have to kind of be a little bit careful of how I talk about it. But we do represent a number of teachers that have brought lawsuits against trainings, so mandatory anti-racist trainings, because in the training, they weren't told, "This is what you teach in the classroom." They were told, "This is what you need to believe in your personal life," and they were told to go out and become political advocates for anti-racism. And so there is a big divide there, and you need to be really careful about your training. My suggestion is that if you have equity training and anti-racist training, I don't like it. School districts are going to do it, though. Don't make it mandatory. If teachers want to learn about that, and they want to do it, and they want to talk about it, fine, but don't make it mandatory. It has no place in our schools right now. So that's just my, me and my, I get off my soapbox on that last part.
That's great. Thanks. So, Rick, how do we navigate this as a school board? We're telling these school board members that they can set the curriculum, and they can decide what the curriculum can be. How does that butt up into a teacher's right to believe what they want to believe?
Well, you know, I always like to, you saw me sort of looking on my phone here because I wanted to pull this up. When I talk about compelled speech, I'm always reminded of the words of Justice Robert Jackson. He was a Supreme Court justice in the 1940s, and there was a famous case in which students who were Jehovah's Witnesses did not want to be forced to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. And the case went all the way up to the United States Supreme Court, and the court concluded that students could not be compelled to do that. And Justice Jackson said, "If there's any fixed star in our constitutional constellation, it is that no official higher petty can prescribe what shall be orthodox in politics, nationalism, religion, or other matters of opinion, or force citizens to confess by word or act their faith therein." Like, every stirring proclamation, like, there's going to be exceptions, there's going to be complications with that, you know? So certainly, you know, if a student is being taught the theory of evolution and being tested on it, you know, they're not going to be able to assert a legal right to answer test questions by, you know, denying that evolution takes place. But there are these, as I think Kim pointed out correctly, that this notion that you can compel students to profess faith in or profess belief in controverted, controversial, disputed notions is very, very problematic. And if you're, we're talking about students, you are on stronger ground. When you get to teachers, now we're talking about government speech. And the government does have the right to say what it wants to say. And so if you think about it in that way, this is why a school gets to set the curriculum. It gets to decide what it will say to students. And teachers, in the context of the classroom, are employees of the government, and they must say what the government tells them to say. You know, if, you know, a teacher may want to, you know, go on and on about, you know, his or her personal opinions regarding, you know, various issues of the day, but if the job is to teach math, they got to teach math. If their job is to teach the facts of American history, that's what they've got to do. And so, on the other hand, if a school district is trying to tell a teacher what it can say in other, what he or she can say in other contexts, then you've got a problem. And so I think if you think of it in terms of kind of a general presumption against making students affirm a belief in some disputed proposition, if you think of it in terms of teachers are agents of government, teachers will, are supposed to, you know, the government has decided to give to students, I think you have the proper framework, and then you can kind of drill down into the details because every, you know, there are various situations and exceptions and complexities, as Kim points out, that require some care to be taken.
That's good, and I think that leads really into our next question, and I want to start with you, Kim, on the next one, because it deals with curriculum. And my question with curriculum is, we know school boards set curriculum, but can it go too far? Can this curriculum go too far and create an environment that is so racially charged that starts to butt up to people's rights? And so I want to give a couple of examples. In Portland, Oregon, Chris Ruffo, the journalist, wrote, "The schools have self-consciously adopted the pedagogy of the oppressed as their theoretical orientation, activated through a curriculum of critical race theory and enforced through the appointment of de facto political officers within individual schools." Reporting about a school district in Los Angeles, journalist Barry Weiss recently quoted a student who said, "We don't call them Newton's Laws anymore. We call them the three fundamental laws of physics. They say we need to de-center whiteness, and we need to acknowledge that there's more than just Newton in physics." So my question is, with a curriculum such as the BLM@School curriculum, can it go too far as to create such a problem, and what are some problems you've seen?
Yes, it can go too far. It would actually violate the Civil Rights Act, so Title VI that we talked about, and the equal protection clause. The issue that we're facing right now is that we don't have a lot of court precedent on this. And so there is a case that we have at SLF right now, and it's kind of the key case to look at for this. It's in District 65 in Evanston, Illinois, and our client is a teacher. And back in 2019, she filed an administrative complaint with the Office of Civil Rights. So when there is a civil rights violation, when a school district treats somebody different because of the color of their skin, you have two potential options. You can file a lawsuit, or you can file an administrative complaint with the Department of Education. She chose the latter. And after an 18-month investigation, the Department of Education issued a formal opinion saying that everything that this school district was doing created what's called a hostile learning environment because it was so racially charged, okay? There was mandatory racial segregation. So you go into a teacher training, and white teachers are sent to one room, everyone else is sent to another room, and they're taught about race and how to bring race into the classroom. Okay? These are facts that have been established on the record. They were doing similar things in their classroom through classroom exercises, so the famous privilege walks, things like that, but then taking them to an extreme. Kids as young as four years old who cannot read an anti-racist pledge were being required to sign an anti-racist pledge and say it out loud the best that a four-year-old can read. Those are two little examples to say this is everywhere in every subject in the school district. So they issued that finding, saying that that was a hostile learning environment. That's an example of too far. The reason why we filed a lawsuit is that, on the second day of his administration, the Biden Department of Ed withdrew that letter of finding. So currently, according to the Department of Education, mandatory segregation is okay, and it does not violate the Civil Rights Act. So we filed a lawsuit on her behalf. We are now three-plus years into the lawsuit, and it is still going on without a ruling from the judge. And so it really does have to be, unfortunately, right now, an egregious situation where we can actually point to case law. But you're going to want to look for those situations. I mean, if there is segregation, segregation is unconstitutional. It has been for many, many decades. It should have never been around in the first place. So when you see that and somebody says, "Oh, well, it's optional," or, you know, "It's not required," it still violates the Constitution, and I would hope that all of our school board members in this country start fighting back against that. So hopefully that answers.
That does.
There's a lot to unpack in all these, but hopefully that gives enough of a flavor.
That does. That's really helpful. So the BLM@School curriculum, I found this one quote from it, as far as its mission. Its mission is to, quote, "unapologetically create a new generation of allied activists." That's what the school is doing to their children. They're creating activists. That's the goal of their educational program at Evanston as far as this BLM curriculum is concerned. Rick, one of the things that we talk about sometimes is this racially hostile work environment and how it's not as easy to decide as you think it might be. What are some of the problems with things that are sort of maybe on the line between racially hostile work environment and not? And how would you, as a school board member, oversee a district to make sure that's not happening?
Well, I mean, if you think about it for a minute, this concept of, and this was developed, this concept of hostile work environment was developed outside the concept of, you know, outside the context of CRT and BLM and DEI and all of that stuff. In fact, the sort of the quintessential hostile work environment claim would generally involve a situation where, you know, typically female employees were being harassed by male employees. And the notion is that even if somebody isn't being denied a job, even if somebody isn't being paid less money, there may be things that can happen in the workplace on the basis of sex or race that make it really impossible for, you know, someone to hold a job. And it can apply in the educational context. You know, you could imagine, you know, a classroom where, you know, a teacher was, you know, racially abusive, but perhaps actually was a racist, and said things, told jokes that made it very, very difficult, you know, for Black children, for example, to be in that classroom. Well, it can go the other way around. And, you know, the example that Dan points out is you have this kind of ideological fervor that this idea that, you know, we're going to, you know, create a new generation of activists and allies by making them subscribe, you know, to, you know, concepts of, you know, white guilt, that you're responsible for things that happened in the past by people who sort of look like you, and you need to feel bad about it, and you need to do something to make up. And all of these things constitute a hostile environment directed at white students. It can make white students feel uncomfortable to be in that classroom. In fact, to some extent, that's the objective of it. They want to make them feel uncomfortable and then, you know, come along to a particular political program. But, you know, Kim said that unfortunately it has to be egregious, but I would argue to some extent it should have to be egregious, that we can't have a situation where something that causes the slightest bit of discomfort is going to be deemed a hostile environment and can't be said. I mean, that would, you know, we have an example of this in school districts' responses to CRT-based curriculum. It's fine for a school district to say that, "Look, we're not going to have curriculum that teaches people that they have racial guilt and that they're responsible for things that other members of their race did in the past." That's fine. But there were schools and states that went a little bit too far, and they said, "Well, you know, we can't have curriculum that makes anybody feel uncomfortable based on their race." Well, that's a problem, right? Because we do want to teach about American history in full. We want to teach about the Civil War. We want to teach about the Civil Rights Movement. There were bad things that happened during that time, and, you know, it is quite possible that students in learning about that will feel uncomfortable. It's a bad thing. It's sad that this happened in our country, but they're not being told that they're responsible for it. And that's a distinction between something like that, which may get us into the realm of hostile environment, and simply, you know, saying things that, you know, students may feel bad about because they're being taught about a bad thing that happened in the past. They didn't do it, they're not responsible for it, but, you know, like anybody else, they may still feel badly when they hear about it.
That's good. Kim, did you have something? Kim, did you have something to add?
Yeah, let's get this back on. Okay. Yeah, and I'm glad that Rick, Rick, I appreciate you pointing that, that out. You know, one thing I started to kind of mention in the beginning of my response to this was that there are multiple types of claims, and a hostile learning environment claim has a very high bar, and it, and it should for the reasons why, why that Rick brought up. The other is just intentional discrimination, right? And so, that's where, when we're talking about things like segregation, and we're talking about, you know, your privilege walks, or your intentional comments, things like that, that crosses over into intentional discrimination. And those are cases that we see in the actual courts much more frequently, and there is really strong precedent that that violates the Equal Protection Clause and violates the Civil Rights Act. And so, I just think it's important that you guys know, too. If somebody comes to you and says, oh, well, this is going to be, you know, this is going to get us into trouble with the Equal Protection Clause, or it's going to get us in trouble with Title VI, you need to know, was there an intention behind it? Was there intentional, was there a treatment behind it? Or is the person talking about everything that's happening in the school district? So, there is a big distinction there.
Yeah, one of the things that happened that, that I was shocked about, and it led to the formation of the Equality Under the Law Project at WIL, is that, you know, coming out of the summer of 2020, and there was the George Floyd murder, and there was the response to that, we began to see explicit government action based on race, right? And we saw this, Kim mentioned our Vitolo case. This was a program where, if you wanted to get restaurant revitalization funds that were made available, you know, after the COVID pandemic to help restaurants get on their feet, priority was going to be given to people based upon their race. And, you know, fig leaf, there was, there was nothing in there that was designed to, you know, hide what they were doing. It was absolutely explicit, and that wasn't the only program, and we've seen it again and again and again. And so, you know, I think as school board members, if you're hearing that, you know, your school district is doing something where, like, you know, Kim pointed, segregation, where they're explicitly treating people differently on the basis of their race, all black students go here, all white students go here. You know, we, we had a, we had a music teacher where the white kids didn't get instruments during band class or something like that, so they would know what it felt like or something ridiculous, along those lines. And when you see them doing that kind of thing, Kim is absolutely right. I mean, that, that's, you know, red light flashing, right? That, we, we cannot have that.
The, the last topic I wanted to talk about is school discipline. And this one has, has obviously real-world consequences. I've, I've, I've heard from innumerable parents, some parents whose children have actually been, been beat up on school buses. I had a mom call about a child who was stabbed on a bus, that the assailant had been subject to numerous complaints about doing the exact same harassive behavior on a school bus, but the administration did not want to get involved, did not want to take action because the student was a minority. And this led to the, this young eight-year-old boy being stabbed on a bus because there was an inability to deal with this. So, school violence has been on the rise. We at WIL have done a report about school violence that Will Dr. Flanders put out about how children are feeling less safe at school and how schools are becoming more violent. The Biden administration is encouraging school districts to reduce racial disparities in discipline outcomes, and the Obama administration has done the same. So, Kim, my question on school discipline for you is, how should board members react when, when they're told that their discipline policy is causing racial disparities and we must do something? Is it legal? And what, what should school board members be on the lookout for when, when they're told about these disparities in, in punishment and for, for discipline policies?
Yeah, well, okay, it's working. I would say the, the first thing is that the racial disparities are not being created by the, so before we had, I'm going to go back up a second. Before we had restorative justice policies, so let's go pre-Obama era, when you look at the statistics, were there, are there racial disparities in the numbers? Yes. But what are they being caused by? That's what you actually have to look at. I'm certainly no expert in this. I'm no statistician. I'm a lawyer. But there's a lot of reports out there. There's a lot of, of information out there by Max Eden at AEI. He put out reports long before COVID on this issue, and he's put them out since. And what it really shows is that the root of these disparities is caused more by home life. And by, when you look at it, a lot of times, and I, and I'm not pointing fingers, but his numbers show that students come from single-parent households account for two times more suspensions than children that come from two-parent households. And when you dig down into that number, African-Americans are three times more likely than white children, than white students, to come from those single-parent homes. I'm not attesting to the numbers. I'm pulling them from his report. But when you actually look at the root cause, I think the first response has to be, what is actually causing this in our school district? And you need to dig down and do proper reporting and proper, proper analysis to find out what the root cause of these problems is. Because when you, when you look at the changes that we've had by these restorative justice policies, the discipline numbers have increased drastically. When you take away the empowerment and the authority that a teacher has to properly discipline a student, the other kid, the kids know this, and they no longer respect the teachers. And so, when a teacher says, you, it can be as little as, you have a deadline for when that report is due. Well, if you can't take off points off that report because they turn it in late, the kids are no longer going to follow the deadline. I know that if my fourth grader turns in his reading log on Monday, because I'm not there today to make sure he turned it in, he's going to get 20 points off of that. He knows that, too. So, he's going to have that personal responsibility. The same goes for discipline issues. And so, you know, the, to answer your question directly, that's not the cause of it. You need to really establish in your particular school district and take charge and take ownership over figuring out where those discipline problems are coming from, and then try to put in the proper methods to actually change the discipline and, you know, create a better school environment, a safer environment for the students. Just taking away the ability to suspend students or to discipline students based on race is not going to fix anything.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful. One of our mantras at, at WIL is that, for EUL, Rick, is that we always say we should treat people as individuals and not members of racial groups. But, but I'm thinking about the school board member who, who receives these reports from a superintendent or a principal that says, "We've got three times more black kids than white kids are being suspended or given detention or given written warnings." Is it, is it wrong for a, a school board member to be even concerned about that? Or what, what should the response be that would be lawful and appropriate?
Well, you know, when, when we started this, this panel discussion, you know, I, I mentioned some complexities that, you know, the, the rule is that anti-discrimination law protects everyone. There's some complexities that you have to be aware of. Hostile environment was, is, is one. Another complexity is, is something called disparate impact. And so, one of the ways in which people might prove racial discrimination is by pointing to a racial disparity. You know, black kids are disciplined, you know, three times the rate as white kids. Now, that in itself doesn't prove discrimination by the school for the reasons that Kim points out. You have to go a step further. You have to say, all right, what's happening here? Is there something happening here which constitutes discrimination, which is the, the, the cause of this disparity that we see? But you have to take that second step. And the problem with a lot of school administrators is they don't want to take that second step. They want the numbers to come out right. And so, you know, getting at the underlying cause, you know, dealing with problems at home life, you know, that type of thing, that would be extremely difficult, maybe even beyond the capacity of the school. But they can get the numbers right simply by, you know, disciplining or not disciplining kids based on race. And what you'll hear from school administrators is, well, you know, we're just trying, we're just trying to end the school-to-prison pipeline. You know, kids get disciplined, and, and then they, they, you know, they get a stigma attached to them, and, you know, they become criminals as a result, and they wind up in prison. And, but there are two problems with that. The first is, is they don't get disciplined, right? They will learn then that they can get away with things, and that puts them in that pipeline, which may eventually lead, you know, to prison or some other bad outcome later on in life. And the other problem is that if you don't discipline kids, and again, you know, Kim, you know, pointed out the lack of respect that for teachers that that engenders, if you don't discipline kids, it, it, it's not just the kid who was harmed by that, the kid who needed discipline and didn't get it, but it's also everybody else. Because now you have a very disruptive, you know, student population. You're not able to control them. You're not able to, you know, center them. And, and it's, 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 it's kids who, you know, who actually do, you know, want to learn. They, 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 they want an environment that's conducive to that, and they don't get it because schools are not imposing the discipline that they need to do in order to, you know, create an, an environment that, in, in, in which, you know, you know, kids can learn. You know, I, I, I went to Catholic grade school many, many years ago, and, you know, we all told jokes about, you know, the nuns, you know, hitting us over the knuckles with rulers and stuff like that. Didn't happen as much as people say it did, but, you know, we learned because there was an orderly environment. And it's very important not to let this kind of desire to get the numbers right get in the way of that.
My, my last two cents on this is that when, when we're confronted in litigation with cases and the government says, there's all these racial disparities, it's proof of discrimination, I ask them, okay, who are the discriminators? What are their names? Have you fired them? Because you can't have discrimination without somebody being a discriminator. It doesn't happen organically. It just doesn't exist in a system. If you have a racial disparity in your school and it is caused by discrimination, there is a person, an employee, who is the discriminator, and that person needs to be fired. That's the way you fix discrimination. That's the way you fix disparities that are caused by discrimination, is getting rid of the bad apples, which do exist. But it's not to wave your hands and say societal discrimination. We get a blank check to do whatever we want, which is what is being pushed by DPI and CISA's and all the people who, who deal with you on a regular basis.